If I could have your catch-up please, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council Order, on, please call the roll.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
Mr. Rapp?
Here.
Mr. Ralletta?
Here.
And Mr. Blake?
Here.
We have nine either here or present this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
As we begin to let us pray, let's take a minute for ourselves, for our own prayers, and then I will continue with prayer. Lord, we come to you as servants. Be with us in our deliberations. We are thankful for the beautiful fall days. We are thankful for our country and the opportunities we have to be free citizens. Be with all in need, be with those in joy and those in sorrow. Bring us peace in all places. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God and indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for the council to discuss anything that may be concerning them about the agenda this evening. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd?
Make a motion to excuse D. Hall.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marmee to excuse Ms. Hall. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Thank you. Should be excused. Next, we have the council minutes of the October 5, 2015 meeting. Is there a motion approved thus? Motion by Mr. Rapp, second by Mr. Johnson. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports this evening of standing committees, one from finance, one from service, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have one report from city officials this evening, Barb Jobs, our tax administrator, the income tax revenue report for the period ending September 30, 2015. Also without objection, that will be received and filed. And finally, under communications, we have a communication from Paul Moran, with his comments regarding issues in Newark from the council meeting of October 5, 2015. Without objection, that will also be received and filed. That brings us to the first section, the comments from citizens. There are two sections for comments from citizens. One is now before the legislation and one is after. Again, this is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. If you'd like to speak, kind of wave your hand, raise your hand, so I'll know, and I'll call you up, Mr. Butcher.
My name is Admiral William Butcher, 263 Union Street. There's one thing that's really on my mind tonight, is the potholes over on Cherry Valley Road. And the way I see it, the way I look at it, I think that the potholes on Cherry Valley Road ought to be patched up. I've been going through that, begun on that street often during the morning, doing my work going to work every morning, have been filling these potholes, and I just wonder if what would happen if a vehicle or some would break their axle or a tire. And then my area issue is Union Street. I'd like to see Union Street be paved. And the reason why I say that, I'd like to see it paved. I think it would look more nicer, Union Street be even more paved. And my caseworkers, she'd ask them when the, my, I'd be getting tore up, be paved again. I said, I don't know when, but I'll say, I told her, I'd be looking on it. My double ten forecast, so forty thirty tonight, high tomorrow, seventy Wednesday, I'd have been seventy by Monday week, and cornered by Monday next week.
Thank you, William. Is there anyone else for citizens' comments? Mrs. Loomis?
Rhonda Loomis, eight seventy, West Church Street. A can of worms was opened at the last full council meeting. I've not been coming to the meetings. I watch them online, and I read the advocate tweets as it's in progress, and for a reason, to let this election cycle get over with and save one current candidate the hassle of contacting my place of employment in an attempt to, I'm guessing, get me in trouble, which is frankly so 2013. The reality is, I pay taxes, I am a citizen, and I am allowed to state my opinion. March 16 of this year, a councilperson was complaining about how political this has all become. My use of a word rankled him. President Ellington, you have the unenviable position of keeping order and the equally unenviable position of knowing when to stop a citizen and at times, members of council. Frankly, I find that you allow folks the opportunity to speak at this podium, and you run efficient meetings. A certain councilperson found that the best use of their time last meeting was to berate another councilperson for an online candidate response. Berating and accusing, twisting it to be a slam against employees, which is such a stretch that it is almost funny, almost. The president, being fair and nonpartisan, allowed that councilperson, paid by my tax dollars, to politicize in their seat. I said the word "young" on March 16, and the president is publicly criticized for not gaveling me. Later, that new chair, during a safety committee meeting, allowed a citizen and friend to scream from the back of a crowded room to sit down and shut up to a director of this administration, and no gavel from the chair. In fact, no mention at all by the biggest complainer of not having the gavel used enough. You can't win this, Mr. Ellington. You're being accused of not allowing free speech on the outside, and then being accused of allowing free speech on the inside. Ethical conduct, it's an easy term to throw out. I have kept every piece of paper, correspondence, and newspaper clipping and subjects that have interested me or at times involved me in all the years of attending council. I am going to add a disclaimer to what I'm about to say, that I was a willing participant, however stupid that makes me, while I ask questions in the name of ethical conduct, since it is apparent one person's character is under attack continuously. Have you ever bought me a coffee at McDonald's to push a document that you keep finding necessary to publicize and humiliate another member of the opposite party? Have you pushed that same paperwork on a minimum of two of my friends? Have you ever given someone money for their campaign anonymously? Have you ever emailed someone information about a former councilperson's health benefits, continuing after you felt it shouldn't and you felt it should be public or investigated? Have you ever emailed perceived misconduct on a former at-large councilperson for the recipient to blog about, only to call her and tell her to back off? He might sue, but good job. Have you ever emailed, called, and pressured someone to share a document that hurt someone else and was completely unnecessary? No dirt on your hands, just mine. All these emails ended with, "You're a peach." You still think I'm a peach?
Thank you, Mrs. Loomis. Anyone else for citizens' comments this evening? Again, there's another section after legislation. Okay, let's move on to ordinances on the second reading, fifteen dash twenty five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Butcher.
Well, she, it's very clear to everyone, she was referring to me, correct?
I never said a name.
Mr. Ellington, who was she referring to? Who was she looking at?
I think some was me.
I'm fine. Who was she looking at?
It could be. Did you want your minute?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
First, you know, I'm going to tell you, Rhonda, I pray for you a lot. I don't know what the constant venom is all about with you, but I pray for you. And I could go item by item down the points you made, I'm not going to do it. I feel bad for you. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Orders on the second reading, fifteen dash twenty six.
Seventy seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Orders fifteen dash twenty six by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp. This is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of a four million dollars of a bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes previously issued, for the purpose of paying the cost of replacement of water main and service lines and all necessary ordinances, including but not limited to hydrants, valves, and fittings.
You've heard the second reading of fifteen dash twenty six. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt fifteen twenty six.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash twenty six? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
You okay, Doc?
Yes, yes.
Fifteen dash twenty six passes nine zero. Next, we have fifteen dash thirty. I'm sorry, Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, this included, part of this was downtown, wasn't it?
I believe it was, yes.
I wanted to change my vote to a no, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that without doing anything else, can't we, Mr. Long? Vote on that was eight to one. Next, we have, okay. Little equipment failure here. Next, we have fifteen dash thirty.
Orders fifteen dash thirty by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Director to certify to the Leaking County Auditor the sum of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and seventy-four cents incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Division with respect to property maintenance violations to be placed as a lien upon certain parcels of Rio property situated in the city of Newark, Ohio.
We've heard the second reading of fifteen dash thirty. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance fifteen dash thirty.
Second by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash thirty? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fifteen dash thirty passes nine zero. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, fifteen dash twenty eight.
Ordinance fifteen dash twenty eight by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, and ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain appointed officials of the city of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict here within.
Fifteen dash twenty eight will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have fifteen dash twenty nine.
Ordinance fifteen dash twenty nine by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rapp, and ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain elected officials of the city of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict here within.
Fifteen dash twenty nine will also be held for a second reading. That will be on November 2nd. Next, we move on to resolutions on the second reading, fifteen dash ninety-two.
Resolution fifteen dash ninety-two by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, and Mr. Cost, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of fifteen dash ninety-two. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt fifteen ninety-two.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash ninety-two? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fifteen dash ninety-two passes nine zero. We move on to resolutions on the first reading, fifteen dash ninety-three.
Resolution fifteen dash ninety-three by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with the Leaking County Search and Rescue Team by leasing to them one C-NIM boat and equipment and declaring an emergency.
We've heard the first reading of fifteen dash ninety-three, but it is an emergency, so it only has one reading. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution fifteen dash ninety-three.
Second motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash ninety-three? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fifteen dash ninety-three passes nine zero. Next on the first reading, fifteen dash ninety-four.
Resolution fifteen dash ninety-four by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fifteen dash ninety-four will be held for two weeks. Next, we have fifteen dash ninety-five.
Resolution fifteen dash ninety-five by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Rapp. This is a final resolution for the project that consists of the improvement of the intersection of West Church Street and North Thirty-first Street, including an added turn lane, increased turning red eye, upgraded traffic signals, sidewalk replacement, curb ramps, and surfacing pavement lying within the city of Newark.
Fifteen dash ninety-five will be held for a second reading. Mr. President? Mr. Cost?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on fifteen dash ninety-five.
Motion by Mr. Cost to waive the two-day reading rule. Second by Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost, Mr. Bub, tell us why.
Yes, sir. We have a deadline with ODOT by the end of October to get this taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. On, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Cost?
Make the motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash ninety-five? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fifteen dash ninety-five passes nine zero. And finally, this evening, we have on the first reading, fifteen dash ninety-six.
Resolution fifteen dash ninety-six by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fifteen ninety-six. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule. Second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
Just dealing with some employee payouts.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. On, please call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt fifteen ninety-six.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash ninety-six before we vote? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fifteen dash ninety-six passes nine zero. Thank you for your attention this evening on our legislation. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. The same will apply as the first. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Will you?
Admiral William Butcher, 263 Union Street. There's one thing, there's my thought tonight, and there's people have been speeding up down Union Street, and most people have been stopping, not been stopping for school bus lights over on Union. I seen that happen twice, almost came this much, we just, came this much on down my Runway thirteen, must have closed call with that. And I'd like to know, is there a way to cross these speeders up and down Union Street? And some of them have been hot running really late night. I'd like to know what the city's going to be doing about. Over Jeremy, I've been invited to a costume product over at Sparks Saturday, and I guess they're going to have some good food over there. I've been invited over there. Sorry about that, but just, Sparks would be over there on Saturday. But it passed.
Thank you, William. Where are you going to go, As?
Okay. Enough said.
Anyone else for citizens' comments this evening? Mr. Moran? Anyone else?
Thank you. Paul Moran, sixty-three North Fourth Street. Four items I want to discuss, bring up. Last couple of months, we've had the hot issue of signs around the city. I want to bring attention, I felt the biggest clutter of signs is are those that are on these streetlight poles. Then last year or two, we see churches and anything else, metal signs just tattoo our light poles, and, you know, light poles were not designed to be billboards, and I think we need to bring an end to that. Because we're looking at churches a half a block or less, and they're posting all these on our streets, poles, two or three of them at a time. It brings a lot of clutter, which wasn't designed to be so. I show that these bike lanes run around the city are completely useless. I see nobody use them at all. You go out on Fourth Street, you don't see nobody using this along here at all. You know, I don't feel that they belong on any busy street whatsoever, whether it's a wide street or narrow street. The street's busy, there is no place for bike lanes. I mean, I even went down South Second Street and observed one afternoon the heavy amount of traffic. I mean, you got parking on one side, the other side's open for traffic to pass. I mean, there's no place for such a thing. You got school buses, this whole heavy load of school buses, South Second, with Benjamin Franklin School up on the hill. I mean, there's just no place, it's just a safety hazard, a bad thing waiting to happen to somebody's life. Downtown, we've lost Suzie Shop and the Downtown Nutrition Shop, so that's two more stores we've lost this year. I hope to compile this in December and share with everybody all the businesses we lost downtown this year. The city lost a friend last week, a very good person. I'm sure if you read his obituary, that says it all, because I'd be here for quite a while going over it. His name's Bob Simon, and he's touched, I say thousands of lies, general public, the courts, jails, I mean, we go on and on. He's touched many lies. And, you know, he's a very, very appreciative person, and he's going to be missed. All the years, the Newark Public Library on West Church Street, getting his janitor and worked his way up. Then he retired when the new one opens, it was kind of like he retired before he went over, he didn't work there. But he's done so much for the community, and, you know, the city is in desperate need of more people like him that go out of their way. I mean, he would deliver books in his own automobile to people, shut in to jail, he did a lot of stuff on his own. And that's the kind of people we really need in the city. I do my part in trying to bring this, a lot of issues to the city. I see a safety issue, I'm going to bring it right here, whether it's a building or whatever, I'm going to bring it here if I'm aware of a safety issue and other things. But that's all I have. Thank you.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, Ms. Moran. Anyone from administration this evening? Our honor, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Honorable Attorney Sassen. Mr. President, I'll pass. Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things this evening. Paul, you're spot on about Bob Simon. He's a great man, very effective in our community. I grew up down the street with Bob, and knew his children, greeted, and he really was an effective man. You're spot on with the comments, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Last night, and I wanted to bring up, as I was driving to my office this morning, it was very nice to hear on the radio, it was kind of a broadcast commercial, but basically, the message was Owens Corning is hiring, and that's, that's good to hear while you drive around Newark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost? I will pass. Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd?
I just want to mention the Parks and Rec's safe trick-or-treat on the square. It's October 29, which is a Thursday. I mention this every year. If you have never been down there, go down. It is so much fun. It starts a half hour before regular trick-or-treat, so it starts at five o'clock, it goes to six-thirty, and then the city's trick-or-treat goes from five-thirty to seven. But there are close to a thousand kids down there, plus families. I mean, whole families come down dressed up, and the idea is that the fire department's there, the police are there, a lot of service organizations pass out things, businesses pass out things. I'm usually sitting there freezing, passing out coupons for Frosties for little kids, but they, I'm sure they'll go get their little Frosties, so. But it is a fun night, and it is a safe place for kids to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I'd like, before I make my comments, I'd like to ask a question of yourself and Mr. Marmee.
Sure, ask.
The, my ethics legislation, the decision has been made between you folks to delay it until November the 9th, and I would like to know the reason for that.
You asked for the legislation. I signed it to the committee. The committee chairman decides on when it is, so if you...
The committee chairman decides on when it is, so.
Mr. Marmy?
I just feel that that's the date that I want to hear it, and if there's a legitimate reason why it needs to be expedited prior to that date, then I would consider it.
Well, my request, Mr. Marmy, is that it be held on that date for the purpose that I will not be here on the 9th. I have very few meetings before I leave office. I worked hard to try to put something together here. I'd like to get it expedited, and I would be grateful if you would call a meeting.
I can't call it, I can call it two weeks after the night. I cannot have it, the prior one, I cannot have it next week.
Is there a reason? Can we discuss that?
Yeah, it's a personal reason of mine, just like your reasons, personally.
You're not going to be here, Mr. Marmy?
No, I'll be here. I'll be here that evening.
Okay, well, Mr. President, Mrs. Floyd and I can call a meeting for next Monday. Mrs. Floyd, would you join me in doing that?
Well, I'm not sure you can call a meeting without the committee chair.
Yes, I think we can.
I don't wish.
The vice chair cannot call a meeting without the?
Only in the absence of the committee chair, and the committee chair is not absent. There's no provision in the rules for a committed meeting to be called by anyone but the chair.
I'm just trying to follow the rules, Mr. Guthrie.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Marmy, I think it's outrageous. I think it's outrageous because?
You're certainly entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, well, and I'm going to share it. You know, I have been, I have an agreement with the Ohio Ethics Commission not to name any names of anyone on this council or in this city hall regarding what is going on with them and my discussions with them. And I'm not going to break that. I had no intentions of breaking that commitment by having a hearing on my ethics legislation next Monday night. This, I don't know that there's been another referral that has been held up for a purpose like this. We know that Mrs. Floyd and I are going to be here, and that someone could take Mr. Marmy's place. Could someone on this council tell me why I can't have a hearing when you know I cannot be here on December the 9th? Can someone tell me why we can't accommodate that request?
Because I believe it's against the rules. And besides that fact, I, we have held, there's been several times when committee chairs haven't done something. Mrs. Floyd had something to do on personnel. A couple of times, you've not been here, it's been. It happens all the time.
Mr. Ellington, are you telling me that my request to be accommodated is against the rules? That's my request.
Yes.
I guess I am electing my request, Mr. Marmy, to accommodate my request to have it next week while we know at least two members of the committee are going to be present.
I'm not saying that I'm not going to be present. I'm not having the meeting that evening. End of story.
Okay, Mr. President, it's an outrage. It is an outrage. It is a shameful outrage.
What's the reason for rushing it then? Why do you want to have it next week so badly?
The reason for, I've explained that.
Well, then we can do it on the week after the 19th.
We need time to deal with this.
Or after the 9th, if they're going to be here.
We need time to deal with this, Mr. Marmy.
The next committee would be the 20th.
And I'll be honest with everyone here, ethics legislation should be discussed before elections, not after elections.
There's the bottom line.
Well, tell me what's wrong with that position.
It's a political move.
I told you that no names will be discussed. And if somebody can look at my proposal, two hours, two hours, folks, of online, free online training every two years for elected and appointed officials, but we don't want to talk about that next week. And changing our rules of council to simply say that members of council need to be cognizant of Ohio's ethics laws.
I don't see anything wrong with your proposal. In fact, I would support it. I'm just trying to what the council rule says now.
Well, then let's have a hearing and not obstruct, obstruct the discussion. I want everyone here to know I would not do this to any of you. None of you, under any circumstance, and no one can point in the five-plus years I was president of council that I obstructed discussion in any way. I'm going to call a recreation committee meeting, at least maybe we can take a report from the administration on our Parks Department next week. And, and by the way, I'm going to be, because of this obstruction, I'm going to be talking about this from now until the day I leave office, because it's shameful. It is shameful. There's nothing that should be offensive to anybody in that legislation that is about as bipartisan as anything could be before this council. The only other point I want to make, Mr. President, is I want to thank Mr. Moran for bringing up Bob Simon, a wonderful man who I think lived in the same house on the High South End for decades, wonderful family, and I, I am very grateful that you brought it up, Mr. Moran. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Mr. Marmy?
I in no way, shape, or form am obstructing anything of the accusation that I am when I indicated that the meeting and the information will be conducted on November the 9th at committee meetings. That is in no way, shape, or form an obstruction of allowing something to come to committee. And to be accused of that is just an accusation. Mr. President, I guess, you know, if I'm going to have jeers and comments during my comment section.
Yeah, that's true. Sorry. That's how it passed. You were out of order, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Raff?
Fun night.
Isn't it, though?
I just have two foot comments. William, I appreciate you bringing up the potholes on Cherry Valley Road. I don't want them, I don't want them filled, I want Cherry Valley Road paved. That's a major entrance into the city of Newark with an anticipated significantly increased traffic flow with the new intersection coming at Cherry Valley in 16. And it's time we took care of that corridor. It's also the major entrance leading into the largest employer of Leaking County being Leaking Memorial Health Systems. So I definitely want to see some significant improvements on Cherry Dog Road, not just pothole repair, but paving and some other things as well. And then, Mr. Moran, will you compile a list by the end of the year for the businesses that have closed in the downtown area? I would encourage you to also compile a list of the businesses that have opened in the downtown area over the last 12 months. If you have an opportunity to compare the business revenues of the lost versus the opened, that'd be an interesting statistic to be able to compare as well. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Ralletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass.
And Mr. Blake?